And good evening. Welcome to the Mayor's City Council Workshop for the month of July. We're going to be with our pledge to flag. I'll ask Councilman Haynes to lead us in the pledge. All right, thank you, Councilman. Let the records reflect that all council members are present and accounted for. Councilman Fuller is with us virtually this evening. We'll begin with our review of the minutes from the month of June. We have the minutes of the June 8th combined meeting. Are there any comments or questions regarding those minutes? All right, hearing no comments, those will be up for your approval on Monday evening. Next, I'll ask any member of council if they have any conflicts with anything on the agenda this evening.
No, sir.
No, sir. All right, very good. I'm then going to open up for public comment pertaining to non-agenda items. If you'd like to speak about anything that is not on the agenda this evening, now is your opportunity. Rules are same as always. If you wish to speak, you're going to come up to the lectern here, you're going to state your name and address, and then you'll have three minutes to deliver your comments. It is not a question and answer time. We're here to simply listen to what you say. If there's need to respond, we will respond to you as appropriate. All the other rules are posted around. With that, I'll open it up. Who would like to speak on non-agenda items at this point?
Good evening. My name is Tara Stansik. I live at 29 Amicus Street, which is the Creekside community, and mayor and city council members. I am here today just to provide some non-agenda items information. First, I would like to introduce our group, which is the Carroll County Preservation Group. It was started in April of 2022, and right now we are just currently working on getting everything established, on what our mission is, as well as what we are currently doing in regards to projects, and then also trying to figure out how to become a non-for-profit, which would be a 501(c)(4), not a 501(c)(3) because eventually we would like to get involved in elections. With our mission currently, we are focusing on smart growth development, as well as agriculture and preserving that agriculture in Carroll County, as well as preserving historical districts and sites, as well as land, and basically whatever else we can kind of think of, you know, to help out with not only the council, the city, as well as our residents here, inside of the municipality, as well as outside the municipality. Secondly, I did speak about our mission in regards to the working with outside, excuse me, working with the historical preservation and districts. So, right now, I'm just proposing because I've noticed through some of my research, which is varied. I am not a subject matter expert on city municipalities, anything like that. So, you know, my job is human resources outside of all this, although I do a lot of research anyway. In regards to HR, so I'm pretty savvy in that respect, however. When we're talking about historic districts and things like that, I found out recently about solables in, and how that is currently been, excuse me, how that has currently been sold, I think, in January of 2022, and so how that is within the historic district of Tonny Town. Noticing that through that, there is not a actual historic district committee or review team for Tonny Town. There is one for Carroll County, however, it is only for Union Town. I was told through Carroll County that, and this was like, I believe, the land development or land and resources, that they said that that historic commission review team is only focused on Union Town, and therefore, they have no other say regarding anything else within the county itself. And because I am from Tonny Town, and I am only working with Tonny Town with my group right now, I would like to propose that somehow we get something like that in, like a review council for that. And then, my goal is to also work with the county to propose getting an actual countywide group, not just for Union Town. So, that's the other thing there. And then lastly...
10 seconds.
10 seconds. Oh, okay. Well, lastly, I just want to talk about traffic, and I learned a lot about it, and I would like to speak with someone afterwards to talk about my traffic questions and answers. Cool?
Okay, thank you very much. All right, who else wishes to speak tonight on non-agenda items? Okay, hearing nothing else, we shall move on for the evening. All right, what we have for Monday evening, first off, is the adoption of the Annexation Resolution 2022-03A. This is on the Sewell Annexation. So, I'll ask members of council to begin that discussion.
I just have a question.
Yes.
Really quick. And Jim, maybe you could answer this for me. What is the timeline on the Comprehensive Plan update? When do you think that'll be finished, wrapped up with a bow on it?
I would estimate a year.
A year, okay. I don't, I don't want to sound crude, but I wonder, because Mr. Eric Glass has 22 acres for sale that's urban mixed use, if it would be worthwhile figuring out how we can incorporate that into the comp plan? And I wonder if that's a direction that we want to go in, if it'd be worth pausing the annexation talks until we've had the comp plan figured out?
Do elaborate a little bit more if you, if you would. Can I jump in there?
Yeah, go for it.
So, as far as the comp plan goes with that urban mix land use designation, that's a unique situation because we've already designated it urban mix in the comp plan. So, what we need to do is create district regulations, which we can do at any point through the normal process, introduce an ordinance, planning commission gets to come out onto a public hearing, and then adoption.
Okay.
So, we have had some conversations recently about what that district might look like because there's been renewed interest in that property or a portion of the property.
Right.
So, we are revisiting some of those conversations, and the planning commission will be touching on that next month, actually. We asked them to kind of take a look at the area, try to consider, you know, the best and highest use for it. And we may invite our economic development director to talk to the planning commission next month as well, as far as, you know, his perspective on use for that area.
Okay, so I just wanted to clarify why I mentioned that with this is because we've talked about resource strain when it comes to the Sewell Annexation. And so, I guess maybe that isn't relevant if, if we can talk about the, if stakeholders with the Eric Glass property wanted to go residential at all in terms of zoning.
Right.
Would clearing ahead with the Sewell Annexation have any impact on that at all?
They're all going to be in the same waiting line.
Okay.
I mean, and as of right now, there's two developments and discussions already in the city at this point.
Correct. We are expecting concept plans for what they're calling, right now, Garnet Ridge, which we know as the Bean Property, just east of what, let's see, Bijon Incorporated, I think, the wedding venue that used to be the old Havelin Insight. So, it's the property just east of that, that we expect a concept for 50 age-restricted dwellings there. That's per their annexation agreement from years ago. And also, we are expecting a concept for the first phase of Mountain Brook Farms to be submitted for the July Planning Commission meeting. That would be about 125 single-family houses for the first phase, and then the second phase would be on the northern part of the property with, and I'm not sure if they would be semi-detached or, but not a single-family product. So, we are expecting those things to hit the planning commission this summer.
Okay, all right, never mind then.
How many homes altogether with Mountain Brook? You said 125 in the first phase?
In the first phase, yeah, that's, that's all we have right now, and 50 in Garnet Ridge.
You said Garden Ridge?
G-A-R-N-E-T.
All right, so there's projects on the horizon. The, the idea here regarding Sewells is having something in the pipeline for future, not something that's looking to be developed this year. It's looking for, what are we going to have in the wings, ready to go, when the time is right for that? And so, if that's the way council decides to do it, let's continue conversation. Did you have anything else, Councilman?
No, that takes care of my concerns.
Okay.
So, I just want to take a moment to acknowledge, we had two open forums in which people shared thoughts. And also, we received correspondence, of which we received an extensive packet with comments, emails, letter submissions, and I just wanted to thank everyone who took the time to either share in person their thoughts, their feelings, their research, and then those who were not present but sent in items by June 1st to Town Hall for us to ponder and reflect on. Just wanted to share a few of my thoughts of what input, and I'll start by saying that Sewell Annexation, let's take a step back, I would say, any annexation with all of the items that were shared, it's a very complex issue. It's not either or. There's a whole lot of gray. And some of the comments, I just have kind of a running tally. I took notes at both of the sessions. There were some that expressed, like Mead's Crossing, there was a criticism that they were kind of cheap crappy homes. I wanted to share that from going through that community. It, when they first introduced it, it was by far the most affordable option in the area. And Tonny Town is rather remote compared to, let's say, Frederick in proximity to DC, which we know Frederick is basically a suburb of DC, and people do commute down 270. When the homes were first introduced, at least the townhomes, it was in the, the two teens, 215, 216,000, that, at that time, in the housing market over near Food Lion, there was a single-family home that was probably two years old that was priced at 437,000. And so, when I was thinking about the price tags, and then I walk around that community and I see, or I know of at least nine law enforcement professionals that live in that community because of affordability. I know of several medical care workers that live in that community because of affordability. I know of several education professionals that moved to that community because of affordability. So, I just wanted to throw out the idea that, yes, it would be nice if we could all afford a Main Street House at 475,000, which requires a lot of upkeep. For 17 of my 20 years in Tonny Town, I lived in a Main Street House built in 1892, and spent a lot of weekends, a lot of time, a lot of funds, going into the scary Hannibal Lecter cellar to try to remediate the moisture issues, try to preserve the floor. We had a slate roof when we moved in. We really wanted to keep that slate roof. It was a 100-year banger slate. But ultimately, we couldn't. We tried for two years. We put a lot of money into that. When we moved in in 2002, there were some big snowstorms, and every time we heard ice roll off the roof, I'd look to the window and count my, my slate, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, on the sidewalk. So, ultimately, adapting flexible, we needed to go with a more modern roof, not our ideal. So, I throw that out there as this idea that things do change. We need to adapt. So, anyway, that was just wanting to address that comment of the kind of cheap homes that were not impressive, but it's an opportunity for a lot of people that otherwise could not afford something, even in our rather remote Tonny Town. Anybody who's been paying attention for the past several years, water, water capacity, sewer, has always been a focus when it comes to INI infiltration. And we, this past year or two, we've been talking a lot about how we're allocating ARPA funds, a whole lot of money to fixing pipes so that we don't have so much inflow, so that we have more efficient pumping. And we've come a long way in remediating a tremendous amount of infrastructure that was very aged, and that goes back to Main Street many years ago with the lining process. So, Tonny Town, I believe, has, has been striving for more than a decade to increase our capacity by fixing our infrastructure. I suppose it's not the most, you know, romantic thing, fixing pipes, but it's definitely needed. And that was a concern that was brought up by many. Let's see, water recharge areas, that's always something that we need to keep in balance. Those, that's something that we just need to do. If we have XYZ development, we have to have recharge. And that's something that Gemma spoke about for decades, giving us updates about what exactly how much recharge we're required to have to have our water capacity. And in recent reports, pump 17s trending back to normal levels compared to previous years. So, I'm not saying it's all perfect, but I heard a lot of people concerned about the capacity. And I think, well, we're 88% capacity on water, 82 sewer, and the Maryland Department of the Environment would like to have that at 80. Once again, we have many projects on the book that are coming in the, in this coming year, of which we are fixing a tremendous amount of pipe. Let's see, I agree that redevelopment is important. Some people brought that up, and I know that up the, up the road, when we first, when I first moved here, it was the Steel Horse. And then it was later Gunner's Grill, Easy Does It, and now there are people out there working really hard to have that come online as a successful business. So, I'm hoping that is the case. Maybe in three years, I'll be getting married there. But anyway, neither here nor there, sorry for the personal story. But yeah, it's exciting when we can, when we can take what's already around and, and make it useful and good. Once again, I go back to 17 years, a lot of blood, sweat, and tears in the Main Street House. So, I really appreciate that. With that being said, as far back as 2004, I walked the Creamery Building, and there it still sits because it's a tough existing building to salvage. That's just the way it is. Don't know what the future holds. I know we have set aside more funds to take yet another look, or at least there was discussion of such. But anyway, you know, sometimes we probably should let go rather than nurturing a money pit. Let's see, there was something shared at one of the, one of the meetings that in Maryland, you're not allowed to collect rainwater. A Google search later that evening, after 0.54 seconds, revealed that that is not the case. So, my concern of misinformation. People talk about, especially in discussion groups on social media, I think we all know that social media can be an echo chamber, but pretty much Prince George's popped up, Queen Anne's, about how you can pick up your water runoff barrels and take them to your house and have that to water your plants because that's just not the case. So, a quick search would help you out, and there are city resources that you could read and go to, so it's not like those were all fabrications. So, I encourage people, if you have a certain thought or an opinion, it's really hard when the amygdala and emotions and the hormones are flowing, the cortisol, the stress, all that, that you're concerned about. If, I would encourage you to intentionally look at opposing viewpoints and the middle-of-the-road viewpoints to, to try to open your mind to any counterpoints that might be there. Comprehensive plan was discussed, and yes, the Sewells property is included in the comprehensive plan. There were some comments being concerned about. It seems that the council and the mayor and everyone, we just want to gobble up all the land so we get a ton of tax revenue. In the past three months, we've had discussions about returning to parcels, taking them off of that comprehensive plan for development and growth. So, it really all depends on the situation of the parties involved. So, I once again didn't see that necessarily as 100% on the money, so to speak. Sorry I'm rambling so long. Do I still have more time?
Brief, keep it brief.
There were concerns about schools. Tonny Town Elementary, as of 2022, is at 72.5% capacity, so we have room there. Middle school's at 80.4%, and FSK is only at 73.2% capacity. And when I looked at concerns or where Carroll County is in terms of agriculture, out of 24 counties in Maryland, we're 10th when it comes to ag dedication. And Dorchester, Caroline, and Kent were among the highest, along with Queen Anne. We know that chickens on the eastern shore make up a good amount of the Maryland product when it comes to farming. Carroll was mentioned in the dairy realm. In 2012, there were 53 dairies. And in 2019, it dropped to 23, and it's not because of big business or real estate buying up for development. It's because small dairy farms have a hard time breaking even, working 18-hour days because of the larger dairies. So, once again, it's a complex situation. You can't just highlight one aspect and say, this is the reason why we should not proceed with XYZ. So, anyway, those were just some of my thoughts, and also, the most common crops were apples and grapes, orchards. And I don't necessarily see orchards over on the other end of town. Carroll is known for its corn, but once again, it's more just open space, it seems. And I understand the want to preserve open space, but once again, it's a complicated issue, and I would like to have a more broad view of all the factors that are playing into any decisions or actions.
All right, thank you, Councilman. Mayor Proton?
Lee, are you sure? Nothing else to say? I mean, I genuinely don't mind if you have... No, I'm serious. I genuinely don't mind if you have other arguments to make. I know I have quite a few myself to make, so.
I'm just going to take a sip of water now. I'm done. Thank you, sir.
Before I jump into my arguments, does anybody else want to say anything prior to? Judy? Judy, are you?
I can wait till you're done, Joe.
Okay. So, I don't think it's any surprise, or especially going back to about a year and a half ago, or two years ago, whenever we, this was first brought to us in a meeting, that I've had concerns with this and that I've expressed opposition to this as well. You know, my reasons for doing so are multitudinous. I, you know, I do harbor some deep concerns about continuing to annex and develop property. I mean, I know that, you know, we've, we've been having discussions about the property in the past, and there has been a tend toward an argument that you have to separate the annexation from the development, but I don't think that technically you're able to do that. I think that one necessarily includes the other. Even going off of the annexation resolution that we have in our agendas this evening, the, the final clause of the, or the final clause of the legislation says it be further resolved that the zoning map of the city of Tonny Town be amended to include this newly annexed property, and that all the property be designated as R10,000 for residential development. So, I think it's certainly appropriate, and I think it's certainly right that we discuss this with respect to the predicate of, of development. And, you know, the, the level of discussion that we're having, I think, is absolutely healthy for the sake of the town and for the sake of the, the public as well. I mean, everybody remembers a few years ago, we bought an annexed land out on Stumptown Road with the intent to turn it into a park. And obviously, the discussion then was as much about whether we should purchase that land as it was about why and for what we intended to purchase that land. So, yeah, I think probably to begin with the actual course of the arguments that I want to make. There has been a very strong argument that has been made in favor of annexation, that it's better to have land within city limits that can be controlled rather than land outside city limits which cannot. I mean, again, it is a strong argument, but regrettably, it's an argument that can logically be used ad infinitum. That is to say, and I'm not, I promise I'm not engaging in reductio ad absurdum here. If you take the argument that, you know, any continuous parcel of land would be better disposed within city limits because we could control that particular parcel of land, you can continue making that argument for the next piece of land and the next piece of land until we either ran into ag preservation land or until we ran into another municipality. Further, everybody will remember just last month, we renewed the town-county agreement, which affords the city notification, the right to comment on, and the right to appeal. A county initiated zoning changes, developments, et cetera, of land within one mile of city limits. And everybody else will probably remember, at least to my knowledge, the most recent use of this was back in 2014, when certain county commissioners wanted to reclassify land outside of the city as industrial because there was an idea that some farm would be converted into a gasification plant. And the city of Tonny Town unanimously wrote a letter protesting the decision to the commissioners. And pursuant to our right to protest, the county abandoned plans to proceed with that reclassification. So, again, going back to the, the predicate of development and including the land, or including development as a reason for the annexation of the land and making them, the two of them being inseparable. Again, if we were talking about turning it into like a drive-in movie theater, or if we were talking about building three or four or 10 houses on it, I don't think that there would be any concern about this whatsoever. I would have no problem annexing property if there were going to be three houses on it or 10 houses on it. But again, realistically, we're not talking about three or 10 or even 30 houses. We're talking about 300-plus houses. Now, with respect to arguments against the annexation with respect to the development itself, and again, like Lee, like everybody here, I've listened to arguments from both sides, opinions from both sides. I've gathered the evidence to me, and I, you know, I just cannot in good conscience come around to support the annexation with respect to the development. So, the most recent data that we have from the county, or that I have from the county, shows that our current population is at 7,936. So, you add another somewhere between 300 and 340 more units. I know that there are different plans floating around for what the proposed development might be. You know, that's going to conceivably add at least another 1,000 residents and 680 new vehicles if you consider that there are two vehicles per household unit. So, according to our own adequate facilities ordinance, we're required to have two police officers per 1,000 residents. At present, we're budgeting for 12 field officers. Realistically, we should be budgeting for 16 based on 7,936 residents in our population. Obviously, we are making efforts to hire new officers, but again, we really should be budgeting for 16 rather than for 12. Obviously, within the last couple of months, a couple of officers have gone on to other facilities. So, while we should have 12 officers, we have about eight right now that are handling services. Now, one thing that we have to remember and consider is that we provide 24-hour police coverage. So, that means that even though we have eight officers, not every single one of them is on duty at every hour of the day. You may have two or three on duty at any given time. So, if you add in a new area of coverage, new residents to respond to, that's going to make the job far more difficult, and even if we had the full complement of 12 officers. Now, if you look at the way that we are kind of undermanned right now, if you look at our Independence Day celebration the other night, if you go back to Wine Fest, our chief and our major have had to fill in to provide security for these public events. While we do budget for the chief and the major, these are supposed to be administrative positions, not field positions. And the fact that we're having to plug the line with the people who run the department is certainly concerning. As a matter of fact, just the other night, the Independence Day celebration that we had, the chief and the major were on duty again, as were members of our utilities department to help guide and direct traffic. And while they've certainly done that in the past, the imperative that they needed to help out this year was certainly greater than in the past, when we did have a full complement of officers. Now, something else that I think it's important to consider when adding a new residential development has to do with a more countywide perspective, and that is regards to, and that is as regards to fire and EMS. So, right now, fire and EMS countywide, and I promise, there's, there's a link here to our town directly with this. Fire and EMS countywide are handling at present roughly 30,000 calls a year. EMS specifically, on average, is dealing with 20,000 calls a year. And last year, the number of EMS calls exceeded 22,000 calls. Now, with the way that things have been going, the hospital has been having to reroute patients to other hospitals because they cannot accommodate the inflow of patients. Now, with our ambulances being dispatched to other locations and other hospitals... Now, with our ambulances being dispatched to other locations and other hospitals, that means that response times are increasing, and that's certainly a dangerous thing when it comes to the life and livelihoods or the life of individuals who need assistance. Now, our volunteer fire companies routinely help one another out across the county. If we, you know, proceeding with a new development means that we are going to be, you know, requiring help from other fire companies as well as our own. So we have to consider that it's not just our own fire company and EMS that's going to have to be responding to this, but we're going to be adding pressure to an already overburdened system. Now, yes, the county has taken steps to establish a department of fire and EMS, and they're doing their best to get that up and running, but that's still several years out. If I remember correctly, that's not supposed to be in full fruition until 2026. Now, I know that an argument has been made in the past that, you know, it may be three or four years before, you know, a shovel goes into the ground to begin a potential new development, but the reality is, is that, you know, we're dealing with situations now that are unfolding, and while we may catch up to a certain point at that given time when a development begins, we're still going to end up behind because we're going to have new areas of coverage, 1,000 new residents, 340 new vehicles. And, you know, another point that I do want to touch on has to do with this kind of field of dreams argument, that if you build it, they will come. One of the things that we've been talking about for years is the installation of a bypass around town. Traffic is obviously a concern for many residents, and yes, there has been an increased amount of traffic in recent years. Now, you can certainly argue that it is a problem. You can argue that it really is not a problem, but nobody can deny that there has been an increased amount of traffic. And if I remember correctly, there was an MDOT virtual meeting that I attended about a year and a half ago, where they stated that the amount of truck traffic statewide, truck traffic in specific, has increased, if I remember correctly, 20%. And we've certainly seen our own fair share of truck traffic through town. So anyways, this, with respect to the bypass being sent around town, going back to the late 1960s, we've been having discussions in some form or another about a proposed bypass to help deal with the flow of traffic. I mean, I certainly take the arguments that were made by families and by moms who are concerned about bringing their children or their families into the downtown area with the amount of traffic that we do have. I certainly do take that argument to heart. So now, here we are 60-some years later, and we do not have the bypass. And yes, there are multitude of reasons for why we do not yet have that bypass, and yes, I respect and I appreciate the argument that by increasing the population, we will demonstrate an increased need for the bypass, but this has been the case of previous developments as well, that these previous developments were going to generate and demonstrate the need for a bypass. Now, with respect to that as well, one of the last things that I want to go into, again, concerns that that whole field of dreams argument, that if you build it, they will come. So in a lot of ways, our town has improved wonderfully, right? You know, I never in my dreams before would have imagined that we'd have a place as awesome as Cinco de Mayo in town, right? Just over the course of the last couple of months, we've had amazing new businesses open up in town, and I think that is an absolutely wonderful thing. But the other side of the issue is that, yes, we have the increasing population, but the services and the other facilities that are supposed to come with that increased population simply haven't been borne out. One of the specific things that I will talk about with respect to that has to do with the fact that even though we have the greater population, our first care clinic in LabCorp, two medical facilities that we've had in town have closed their doors. I've heard from a number of residents, especially the elderly, who are deeply, you know, have difficulty getting down to Westminster or Frederick or Gettysburg or other areas that are a lot farther afield to get simple medical procedures done or to have something like a simple checkup done. Now, to my most recent knowledge on the topic, none of the medical provider, medical practitioners in town are taking new patients. Now, you're going to add another 1,000 residents to town, plus in addition to that now, moving ahead with Meadowbrook and moving ahead with Garnet Ridge, you're going to have an additional population, an additional level of residency in the town, and again, we don't have the healthcare or the health facilities to accommodate them. And again, I think that's certainly contravened to the argument that a greater population necessarily means that you're going to have increased services and facilities for residents. And then, last but not least, and I'll let it go here, and if anybody wants to argue with me, I'm happy to engage in discussion, the last thing I'll talk about is that, you know, I certainly, I certainly take the argument that additional population, additional development means that there's going to be additional revenue. And while I do take that argument, you also have to look at it as Councilman Hand said from the other side as well, that additional development, additional population means that you have to now provide additional service. You have additional costs, you have additional outlays to those new communities. That means more police coverage, more fire and EMS coverage, as I had mentioned earlier. And so it, you know, it really is not a zero-sum benefit. There are going to be ramifications from increasing the population and increasing the area of coverage that we're going to have to do. Plowing in the winter is another one, for that matter, right? The increased number of roads that we're going to have to cover in the winter. You know, so again, going back to what I'd said earlier, if we were talking about annexing this land for a park or for a drive-in movie theater, or even for a couple of stores, I really would not have an issue with it. But again, given the other developments, as had been mentioned earlier, that we have in the wings, given the fact that we are going to be adding conceivably 1,000 more residents, 680 more vehicles, the increased traffic, the lessening facilities, the increased areas of coverage, I just don't feel that at this time, this is right for the city of Tawny Town. And that's not to say anything negative about the Sewells, that's not to say anything negative about the process of annexation. I just feel that with the preponderance of the issues and the evidence that we have before us, it's just simply not right for us. And, and, you know, I cannot in good conscience, knowing what I know about response times, fire and EMS, police coverage, et cetera, I just, I cannot in good conscience consent to an annexation which I know is going to exacerbate an already overburdened system. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Would anyone else like to speak?
I guess it's my turn.
It's all you. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
As I say, between Lee and Joe, like, all of my notes are now all over the place because I don't want to hit the same topics. One of the things that keeps getting, getting thrown out there is this whole smart growth idea, and, and I know that that whole build it and they'll come thing, to me, that's more of a, a demand creates the supply. You know, those shortages in the police department, we were having a hard time having people even come out and apply for those positions, but if you have, you know, the people that are coming into the community, then you have the people who will get the jobs that are then being offered. Our infrastructure is, is being improved, you know, every day. Those same, you know, things that you're saying we're going to have to offer to these community, you know, communities, it's going to be more efficient because we then will have the money to make those things better. You know, again, the smart, smart growth, that section is exactly what smart growth is about. It's about walkability. It's about, you know, being in that, that rural area where we're not having to work around large buildings that are already there or, or other, you know, this is a clean slate. Like, that is what smart growth is, is creating a community that serves the city. And does it increase people? Yes, it does. But there's a reason for that. And, and, you know, I think I had mentioned to Joe in a, in a recent conversation that our city's growth is actually behind what was, you know, assumed was going to happen. I, you know, like, the whole, the whole plan was for there to be many more residents than there were, but obviously, we had, we had quite the crash, quite, you know, those years ago. I'm not saying that I want a community built immediately, but the Sewells have been waiting for years, and we have put them off, and we have denied them, and they have, they have sat there and waited, and they played the game, and they did what was asked of them, and, you know, my, my process was it's almost the opposite of eminent domain. Instead of taking their land, we're saying, no, you know, we absolutely don't want you, when that's what they've been waiting for. And it just seems very, you know, I can't even think of the proper word for, for what that is. I understand everyone's arguments, but again, I am all about planning for the future, you know, getting to a place where we are setting up the stage for our future success and for getting the infrastructure stronger and for getting those jobs and those businesses to come in because then people will go to them. Having grown up in, you know, the very, the DC area myself, in Silver Spring, you know, you go downtown into DC, and there's people who shop in large groups, and there's mothers with kids, and half the time, the traffic is so heavy you can't hear yourself think. We've been very spoiled in our little city here, and I love that. I love that we have this fantastic city, but people are mistaking the size of our city with that small-town feel. You can have that and still, you know, allow development. It's about an attitude. It's about how people contribute, volunteer, you know, are actually a part of the process instead of waiting until they find something that they're unhappy about and then using their, their self-serving intentions to try to get involved without even knowing the whole situation or the whole story. The fact that people came up and actually said that we didn't have enough transparency, I found very offensive because I think we've been very transparent through this whole process. It's just nobody has ever bothered to actually come to any meetings or be involved. So that's neither here nor there for this topic, but again, the Sewells have paid their dues.
All right. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Just one last thing, Mr. Mayor, and I will keep it brief, but I do want to emphasize, I guess, my personal bottom line on this decision is the fact that while there are legitimate concerns to be had, this cell is not going to wait for our conditions to change. And so if we don't annex, we effectively remove ourselves from the conversation, and this now becomes a conversation between the Sewells, their potential buyer, and the county instead of us. And I don't want to bank on the county approving something to be put on the Sewell property that we will like, that we'll be a fan of, that this community would be okay with, because the way that it's zoned currently, it very well may not be. And so I think that it's better that we be the ones that have influence over what that property becomes than not at all.
And that we determine the timeline of when it becomes.
Exactly. Yep. But that's, that's all from me.
Any other comments? Has everyone?
Well, I could offer one amount, I don't know if it was, would assuage your concerns, Councilman, but again, you know, what I'd mentioned a little while ago, going back to the town-county agreement. And again, I just bring up the issue of the industrial zoning slash gasification plan from 2014, where, you know, it seemed like that land was going to be rezoned until we ran. Again, I was actually the one who wrote the letter that the city sent to them, saying, you know, we don't abide by this, we don't agree with it, and it didn't happen.
And I think that's excellent, but with all due respect, we can't make policy decisions based off of good-faith precedent, and I don't think that's a good idea going forward.
What relying on the town-county agreement that we have with the...
How, how would the town-county agreement effectively dissuade the county BZA from a livestock sale spot or an airport or ag equipment storage?
Well, say for the sake of argument that they wanted to put in, I don't know, a Dan Haynes t-shirt store, right? And we, you know, none of us were in favor, but I would imagine that a formal letter from the mayor and a unanimous council saying, this is just not right for a, you know, within one mile of city limits for us, you know, they certainly would take that with great weight.
Sure. But it doesn't guarantee that it wouldn't happen, and that's my point.
Well, and that's, that's certainly a strong argument to be made to an extent. I mean, also, the fact that we would have a property within our jurisdiction doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to end up with what we set out to achieve either.
So I'm going to interrupt this. I'm thinking back to the gasification plan. If I recall correctly, the county never contacted the city and said, hey, we're considering this. The city heard about this in the newspaper. The town-county agreement wasn't respected in that case. It came out through the newspaper. They didn't contact us. The city saw it, the city responded formally. I mean, the town-county agreement's been ignored in that way before. It's nothing against the county. I mean, it's been several years, things have changed. What I'm saying is, you can't rely on that all of the time. That's, that's my thought on that one. Anyway, is there any additional discussion we're going to have on this? Anything from staff?
Sure. I'd like to just share a couple of thoughts on the process in the county. Not that I profess to be an expert on all of the county policies, but they have a, they have a master plan as well. So generally, the commissioners, the last couple boards of commissioners have looked at properties when it comes time to rezone and to update their land use designations as to not take away any rights from the properties, but not necessarily grant additional rights to those properties. So they've kind of maintained a sort of status quo approach. That kind of goes out the window when, when land is annexed into a municipality because then it's no longer under county control. But that's kind of been the, the approach the county has taken for many years now. So they tend not to favor rezoning properties in the county to, you know, significantly higher densities. Of course, they are faced, just like we are, with property owner requests when rezonings are considered and when they're doing their plan updates. So they have similar processes to go through the, you know, the same thing that we do. So I don't think we should expect a property that's currently zoned agricultural to suddenly turn into, you know, R-20 or R-10
Right.
on well and septic.
Right.
You know, it's, it's just not likely. So I don't think that is a legitimate concern that, you know, if we don't annex, it's going to be something awful. I can't say it couldn't happen, but I think it's highly unlikely.
Jim, am I misunderstanding what, because I'm basing this off of the uses that are permitted in an ag district.
Okay.
So, and I mean, I have it up here, so unless I'm misreading, it is, it does include things that some of the, I guess, worst-case scenarios are subject to BZA approval, but there are others that are not, like livestock sales. So I insist that it is a legitimate concern.
I think everyone made some very good points, and there's good points on both sides of the argument. No one can sit here and say that right now, the city can handle 300 additional houses. We know we can't handle that right now, and that's why we're not approving a development of 300 and some houses. The purpose of this process is to bring to the light of day what has been requested the city for several years. And that's what we have been doing for at least two years now. Is that correct, that we've discussed this in public? We're putting it through its paces so that we make the proper decision on it. We put it out for public comment, we accept everyone's comments, we discuss it in open meeting, and all of this has been occurring in open meeting. The, it's going to come down to Monday night, what's decided, you know, what the council feels they want to see happen, and then we'll move forward appropriately. But that's what brought this. This is not the result of the city wanting to grow, the city wanting to take property. This is a result of their request and our thought being, let's bring this out in the light of day so we can discuss it openly and hear what the rest of the city has to think about it. And that's where we are at this point, and I appreciate all of the thoughtful conversation from the council this evening. I appreciate all the comments we've received from the community as well. If you have additional comments, there will be a time later for comments on agenda items. You can speak to this briefly, and then, of course, you can speak to anyone on the council prior to Monday evening as well. So with that, I'm going to end that discussion, and you can debate it further Monday evening if you wish. But moving on, we have Resolution 2022-10, water allocation for the month of July. Is there any discussion from council on that? Mayor Protem?
All the math checks out.
Yes, thank you much. I hope you showed your work.
I can show you right now if you'd like.
No, we're good. We'll deal with that later.
What happened to trust but verify? Councilman Hand, would you like to verify?
Any other discussion on that resolution, the water allocation? All right. If we're good, that'll be up for your approval on Monday evening. Next up, we have our city manager report. Mr. Weeburg, what do you have for us this evening?
Okay, just a few quick updates on the usual project items. Well, we already kind of went through the Sewell annexation, so we'll skip that one. Charter and code review, we had some conversation, as I mentioned earlier, about the urban mixed land use designation and our lack of district regulations for that. So we hope to have some discussion on that at our July meeting with the Planning Commission and start working towards some district regulations to put that property or to frame what we think would be the best use for that property since we already have the land use Roberts Mill Road, Broad Street, we expect to have a, we're having a 60% design meeting scheduled for, actually, tomorrow. scheduled for actually tomorrow. So the engineering is continuing on that, and CDM Smith is making progress. Couple of things beyond the normal project category. Had a chance to speak with Secretary McCord of the Planning Department at the MML Summer Conference during the roundtable event, and I've asked for some some assistance as far as what state resources might be available to help us through our comprehensive plan update. In conversation, it sounds like there have been some other municipalities that have taken a hybrid approach where they've worked in-house on a number of the chapters and just brought in consultants for some of the more technical aspects. So been kind of playing tag with with contacts at Maryland Department of Planning on that, but that's hopefully going to help us out getting through our comprehensive plan update. We did put some money in the budget this year to bring in a consultant as needed, but I don't think that's going to be enough for a complete overhaul of the plan. The planning commission is also, I've tasked them with, because we have so many newer members, with taking a look at the plan and making sure the goals are still relevant and still what we want to see in the plan. And if that is still the case, then we're looking at more just updating chapters. In particular, our housing element doesn't have the needs assessment, I believe, that it's required to have under today's planning visions, and our water resources element is gonna really dictate the growth element and how big we think we can get. As I've said before, I can't imagine that MDE is going to suddenly tell us, sure, put in more nutrients in Piney Creek. So we are gonna be wastewater, stormwater constrained, I think. So, let's see, moving on from that, we've been talking about traffic a good bit lately as well as pedestrian safety. So I contacted State Highway Administration again and floated some of the ideas that that have been kicked around as far as possibly a trial basis for a turn arrow. The response to that really was a no either, you know.
They do it or they don't.
Right, they do or they don't, and it's either gonna help or it's not. And, you know, the the modeling that they've explained to us before indicates that the intersection is functioning as efficiently as it can right now, the most efficient for the way it's it's laid out, and they can't extend the turn lanes without taking parking away.
Right.
So we're not there yet. I had read something about high-intensity activated crosswalk beacons, which they call hawk beacons. And unfortunately, those are used for much higher volume areas than we have, both vehicular and pedestrian volumes. So that's off the table. The next step down would be a rectangular rapid flashing beacon that they use at crosswalks, which we've seen nearby in some municipalities in Pennsylvania. And probably locally around here, but not on state roads. Those require traffic counts of over 10,000 daily annual average daily traffic, which, again, we don't have in here in Tawny Town, so we don't qualify for those either. The good news is that the state is planning to upgrade the intersection with enhanced visibility crosswalk pavement markings, which are the white rectangular blocks that'll go across kind of like a piano key sort of look. So that is scheduled to happen at some point this summer. We don't have a definite date yet, but our crosswalks should be painted to stand out more at the square. It will only be at the square because they are reserving that treatment for the higher volume traffic, pedestrian traffic areas. So just wanted to give you some updates there from State Highway. We did talk a little bit about the possibility of doing a leading pedestrian interval for the crosswalk signals. That would be where when someone pushes the button, they get five seconds to cross before the corresponding green light illuminates. That's something we may want to look at in the future. It might be good to wait and see if the improved crosswalk marking makes people feel a little safer, maybe helps motorists recognize that there are crosswalks there, more so than just the two parallel lines we have now. So we may want to take a kind of wait-and-see approach with that, and if we still hear concerns after the markings are done, then maybe we revisit that leading pedestrian interval.
Right, because the impact of leading pedestrians is gonna pile up traffic further.
Exactly. So that's, right, so that would be five seconds whenever somebody hits the button that no cars are going through.
Right.
So, and over the course of a day, I suppose that adds up to, you know.
Depending on the time of day.
And depends on how many times somebody hits the button.
Right.
You know, how frequently.
I mean, we can get traffic counts, but we can't get pedestrian counts at the intersection. That's the problem. We don't know how often people cross the intersection.
And just to put things in a little bit of perspective, State Highway has traffic counts available for the state roads around the city. They do traffic counts on FSK Highway north and south of the city, Tawny Town Pike just west of the city. Unfortunately, east of the city on Route 140, they don't measure until you get past Mayberry Road, so we don't have a true depiction of of traffic that's going through the roundabout and going out on 140. And they also count on Old Tawny Town Road close to the city. the highest count on any of those is Tawny Town Pike east of the city, just past Mayberry Road, just east of Mayberry Road. But if you add up all of those locations I talked about, we're looking at a peak of 30,212 annual average, annual daily trips. with that peak of 12, well, in 2019, the peak was 12,800 at that eastern point. So none of the others are even close. We're looking at 5,000, 4,000 for all the other legs coming out of the intersection. So we're not even close to that 10,000 for the pedestrian beacons. But I also thought it was telling, and just tying back a little bit to the Sewell annexation, we heard a lot about traffic. So if you total up all those those counts and 2020 went down, obviously, we had the lockdown for many months. I would expect when 2021 figures are available, we'll see them creeping back up. But they range from 29,000 trips in 2018 to 30,000 in 2019, down to 25,000 in 2020. And what I think is notable is that, according to the census in Tawny Town, there are a little under 3,000 workers 16 and older not working from home. So just to kind of think about traffic and how much is generated here in the city versus, you know, traffic that's through traffic. So, you know, I mean, of a population of under 8,000 people, and the traffic around us is 30,000 vehicles a day. So the city is not the traffic generator.
Right.
At least not the primary. So just wanted to kind of put that out there for consideration.
Oh, Jim, if I might ask, and I know in the past we had, and this is a respect back to the square, we had talked a little bit about lighting. Is that something that falls under the purview of State Highway that we would have to go through them to improve lighting at the square, or is that something that we can tackle ourselves if we decide to?
Well, I think that for the folks who think it is a little a little dim, and and again, I back to State Highway, they have looked at the lighting. Of course, it is meeting the standards. State Highway doesn't provide pedestrian lighting. They provide lighting for vehicles at decision points. So, you know, and the lighting that's in place meets the State Highway standards. So the streetlights that are the cities, we control where they go. They were, you know, designed for a certain light footprint when they were installed in the downtown area. And, you know, I've pointed out to folks who say how dark it is that I can take a piece of paper like this or my agenda after a meeting, you know, in the middle of winter, when it's dark, when I walk home, and I can read that thing the whole way home if I want. So if I can stand there and read, you know, 10-point font by the streetlights, I don't know if it's really all that dim. But that's, everybody has their own perception of it, I guess. So, but according to State Highway, the intersection meets the the standards for for a decision point.
So if that was something we did talk about again in the future, we would be incumbent upon us to be the ones to improve lighting.
Right. Or someone could put lighting on the front of their building if they felt like the sidewalk was not bright enough in front of their particular property. There's always, you know, a self-help opportunity there for folks, as long as they don't create glare for traffic or, you know, shine lights on neighbors' properties, things like that. So there's always opportunity for self-help.
Thank you very much, Jim.
And, let's see, so we touched on this very briefly. Planning Director Hale and I met with Ward Communities about those two properties we mentioned, on the west edge of town, the area just before the former Easy Does It Bar and Grill, and also the southern portion of Mountain Brook Farms. So hopefully, we'll see those concept plans in July for the planning commission. the concept that was shared for Mountain Brook Farms had some cul-de-sacs on it, and our code really discourages cul-de-sacs, so hopefully, they'll do a little reworking of that. But it's a challenging property because there are some water courses there, and as as we learned with the Forest Glen subdivision, which was the one that finally connected the two halves of Grand Drive years ago, we also have Dunkel Court and Fairground Avenue end in cul-de-sacs. And that's because there's kind of an alternatives analysis at the Army Corps of Engineers when it comes to stream crossings. So if you can cross at one point, crossing the same water course in multiple points is discouraged. So there are some instances where we do end up allowing cul-de-sacs, like we did with Dunkel Court and Fairground Avenue years ago, because we got the crossing at Grand, which meant if we could cross it there, we didn't need to cross it for Fairground. So that's why we ended up with two cul-de-sacs. And I think Mountain Brook Farms may have a similar situation. But we did, again, stress with the engineer and developer that, you know, multiple alternatives for the Tawny Town bypass or Antrim Boulevard do cross this property, and we really would like to see that incorporated into the the design, or at least a segment of that. So hopefully, we'll be happy with what they bring back in July. Since the packets went out, have a little bit of bad news. Well, eight is down. Turns out that it's the motor. They pulled the pump. Other parts are fine, but the motor is is bad. So we're hoping a replacement can be delivered tomorrow, but don't know at this point. So hopefully, by Monday night, I'll be able to give you the good news that it's back up and running, but right now, the jury's out. And lastly, we can talk about this a little bit Monday, but we're looking ahead to when the annual audit is gonna be presented. We have to have that approved by the end of October. And we ran into having to schedule a special meeting last year because our Monday meeting falls on the Columbus Day holiday. So we're trying to plan ahead this year. So if we can decide Monday night if we're going to do one meeting in October and maybe have a combined meeting on the workshop night or how we want to handle that, just so we can work things out with the auditor as far as when they need to deliver and when they need to present the the annual audit for us. Let's see. And that's about it for me. So, thank you.
All right. Do we have any questions from the council for the city manager on his report? Do we have any questions on the departmental reports? Okay. We shall move into our legal report. Mr. Gallow, do you have anything for us this evening, sir?
I do, Mayor Council. A couple of things, some good news on lots of different fronts. The Syrian option that we talked about and you authorized has finally been executed. So we now have the option to purchase the 4.4 acres. That would be a future bypass route. The city manager is now working on phase two of that, which is how we actually do it. You recall that it's not just getting 4.4 acres, it has to be added to the neighboring parcel, which the county owns. So that's the phase we're in. We have a short window to make this happen, the next several months, I mean, that kind of short window. But we need to make it happen, or else we're gonna have a problem in the future bypass alignment, right? Because if you lose one little piece, it all falls apart.
Yep.
So that's positive news. That's been going on. Mr. Weebuck's worked on that for, I'd say, years at this point in time. Second bit of good news, at least for us, maybe not for the property owner, but you authorized action on several properties, code enforcement action. So there's an update to give you on the property that was at Chestnut Court. Chestnut Court was the one that had the cat issue. Okay? So the Tawny Town Police Department, Officer Zachadalis executed a search warrant in combination with the animal control, Carroll County Animal Control. Animal Control took the lead because of reports and observations of numerous cats. Basically, they got a search warrant from the circuit court judge to execute, and they found 24 cats in the property, which were removed to the Humane Society and to be dealt with. The question still is whether the animal control people will be bringing charges against the owner of the property. The property itself is unspeakable about what the inside looks like. There were not 24 cats running around in your house, okay? This was one entire house litter box and unfit. So we were able to, as the search warrant team, Officer Daxadalis was doing the police part, making sure it was safe. The animal control people did their part with the animals. And then Mr. Hale with code enforcement was able to be part of the team to go in and document the condition of the house. You recall, that was the part that we were most interested in because of the smell of ammonia and urine and all the things that go with that. So we now have documentation, and we need to take the next step to do something about this. And that's, you know, there obviously will be a requirement that something be done, but the what to be done is anybody's guess, because this isn't a house. This is a townhouse connected on both sides to other units. So it it creates issues. But we're making progress, more than we have in the past. So that's the story. 24 cats are no longer Tawny Town residents. Okay. The next issue, I'm all positive tonight, positive issues the whole way across the board. You authorized action on the PFSA. Remember PFSA? That's the contaminant that is in a lot of waters for the AFFF, which is aquaous film-forming foam, the stuff you see firefighters use, except in days of old, because the stuff they use today is environmentally friendly. The stuff they use in the old days is not. That's why it's in the groundwater all over the country. So we joined the lawsuit. There are two things that are coming out of that. One is our lawsuit is, we got ready to be filed. I've reviewed the draft. It'll be filed in South Carolina in the federal court. The reason for down there is that's where all the other suits are being gathered. They're gonna be gathered around the country in certain venues so that they can be consolidated into what laymen would call a class action suit. It's not necessarily that, but that's the idea for what for our purposes, at least. So I'm gonna I'm gonna review the complaint tomorrow and then authorize its filing. That's what we had said in our agreement. We're not gonna do this every time something happens. So that'll get filed and get us in the queue. Obviously, we're requesting a jury trial, and what everybody is doing. Once it all gets scheduled, the judge will combine it, and then they'll start talking about how we're going to resolve the matter. We're talking big companies, 3M, DuPont, companies like that. Along with that, the second issue is the attorneys that are handling this. I mean, we're dealing with a nationwide firm, Bud's and Barron. We worked with them before on the MTBE lawsuit, same type of pollutant issue. They have past experience with us. You recall, they were able to get a $700,000 judgment for us in the town. Remember the big check? So they asked the other law firm that they're partnering with that their fee agreement be adjusted. Has no impact on us. It's the same amount of money, it's just the lawyers are gonna fight over big pieces, okay? Think about like pirates. They know us better, so they feel like they needed to do more work, and they should get a bigger piece of the pie that they get that comes from us. Long story short, it doesn't affect us at all, and so we're gonna sign off on that. If they seem to be agreeable to it, we're agreeable to it. I wouldn't count spending any money on this for a couple of years, but it is definitely going to grow. If there's any downside to what's going on, remember I told you that this was up and coming? We had some samples taken around the state of Maryland about this. MDE created a list of people that had this PFAs in their their water source, but there was no MCL, Minimum Contaminant Limit. There wasn't one issued by EPA. EPA just in June issued a, I'll call it like a warning issue, saying, hey, this is gonna be an issue, and it's coming your way. Still no MCL limit. Still no MCL limit, but it's happening now. And so what that means to us is, surprisingly enough, there are contaminants in the water we drink. Everybody knows that or should know that. And there is a limit that the EPA says those contaminants can reach. So once they set a limit, we have to treat it to get it below that limit. So we don't know what that limit will be, but they're going to set one for PFAs as well as all the other things they set limits for. How that affects us means that now, instead of just having contaminants in water, we could be seriously damaged if we have to try to remove the contaminants. There's different methods to do it, filters and things like that. You know, things can be done, and it happens all the time, but it becomes more real to us at that point in time. It's not just a damage to our asset that we have, it's an actual cost, because we're going to incur that. So that's developing, and it's positive news. We're moving along with that. So that's what I have for you, a bunch of legal stuff this month. Any questions for me?
Questions for the city attorney? Okay. So you'll be looking Monday evening from us just to approve the request from the higher-up lawyers?
Yep. Just a unanimous consent saying you're okay with it, so that's just something on the public record in the minutes that you did it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. That's going to bring us into our new business for the evening. First up, we have our monthly financial report. Are there any comments or concerns on that report as presented to you, council? All right. Hearing none, we're going to go into the accounts payables. Comments, questions, concerns? General inquiries? Nothing of the type? All right. Moving into item three, ratification of special event permit approval Xavier Smith Basketball Camp. Get to the proper, proper page here. Hang on. Okay. So this is a ratification. I believe the, the event started July 2nd, if I'm looking at it correctly. So it's been approved. There's simply come the councils just to ratify the approval that was put into place. Are there any comments or questions on that? Okay. Then we shall continue moving along. Approval of design-build agreement, American Ramp Company for the THS Park Skate Park project. This is a request from Lorena, our Parks and Rec Director, to get some work done at the skate park. She's looking to enter into a design-build agreement with a company that is part of...
Sourcewell.
Thank you. Sourcewell. A cooperative purchasing resource agency. So essentially asking them to design and build this project. We have some funding from the state and also some funds that we're looking to put into it. Are there any questions from the council?
Just briefly for my own edification, just a brief, I guess, refresher on Sourcewell and why that negates the necessity for an RFP process.
Mr. Weprick?
So with, with this organization, the, the contractors that are, are available for this work have already gone through a public process for their, their costs for the services that they provide. So because they've already essentially gone through that public process for their pricing and their bidding, we, we are able to leverage that. It's kind of like piggybacking on another organization. So it saves us from having to develop a full RFP. And also, the design-build is something a little, a little new for us in terms of...
Right.
Playgrounds or Parks and Rec. So usually we have an RFP. Vendors respond to that with their specific designs. In this case, it's more of a process. So they'll be working with Lorena and the Parks and Rec Advisory Board on, on nailing down the details. So Lorena has researched a couple of companies, as she said and as she indicated in her memo, and feels very comfortable with American Ramp Company.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? It's exciting, getting some much-needed improvement to that skate park. Moving on, we have acceptance of Tawny Town Crossing Road Frontage Parcels. Who would like to speak to that from the staff side?
I can get that. Dan, can you put my screen up on the floor monitor, please? So this is a little bit of housekeeping, really, for part of the Tawny Town Crossing closeout. When it was developed, the county requested future widening parcels along Harney Road and State Highway requested a piece along Route 140. So is the image up there that you guys can see?
No, not yet.
Not yet? Okay. Okay. So basically, we are looking at a small parcel as you round the curve from West Baltimore Street onto Harney Road, on the Baltimore Street side of Westview Drive, and another parcel beginning at Westview Drive, running up to, I guess, the existing yellow house, the existing old yellow house. So it's just two small parcels, about 30 feet wide, for future roadway widening. Originally, they were going to go to Carroll County, but as the county would, will be asking us to accept maintenance of Harney Road as, as now the Tawny Town Crossing is in, and of course, depending on the Sewell annexation, you know, they may accept, may want us to take maintenance of the road, even though we won't own it. But that's, that's to be seen. But at any rate, these parcels are for future widening. And I don't know if the plat's showing yet.
No.
Okay.
I don't think he was able to put it up.
Okay. All righty. Well, I can email that out to everybody, just so you're, you're comfortable with it. But that's what that's about, so.
Okay. Any questions from members of council?
I guess we could bring the giant paper copy of the map on Monday night. Sometimes the old ways are the best.
I believe actual size to scale would be good.
Okay.
Oh, kids. All right. Any questions on, on that topic? Is this the final step to closing out Tawny Town Crossing, or are there still sureties that are going to be outstanding?
We have one more small issue, and that is some of the streetlights are, were installed just beyond the utility easement. So there is going to be a revised easement plat to cover those streetlights. Streetlights on the interior of the project will remain the property of, of Tawny Town Crossing, but those along the road frontage will be ones that we maintain. And the ones on Westview are fine, but the ones going around the curve onto Harney are just outside the, the easement area. So we want to make sure that, that we have a utility easement to be able to go in there and work. Not that we expect Tawny Town Crossing not to let us go in and do the work, but it's really just, you know, dotting the i's, crossing the t's, and making sure that we have every right to be there, so.
So 30 years down the road, there's not a question?
Exactly. Yes.
We also have the, you recall, this required us to, we found that we owned property that we didn't know we owned, an old road type of thing. And so we have the, finally got the descriptions to go with that, and the town clerk and I are working on that project to get them signed. It's very straightforward. We are the ones giving the property away, so we're going to do that, and the people don't want it to accept it, we've at least done what we needed to do. And the developer paid for all the, to make that happen. So that, yeah, is need to be done. We just got the descriptions last week. And to put this in perspective, what the city manager was showing you or didn't show you, where the deeds were, this is how you avoid paper alleys.
Right.
Right? Because what you see there is where alleys or streets would be, and nobody ever follows up, because it's not glamorous to close these things out. And then 30 years later, you have, where, where's the deed? This is why these things happen.
Right.
We don't have paper alleys anymore.
So and the other property is the, what we discovered is the proper alignment of Westview, yet it was built elsewhere.
Right. The, apparently when Westview was built, we got an easement and the alignment, and it goes behind the houses and that are there on Westview, and nobody built it in that, because in the old days, I guess, it was better to go that way than this way, and nobody ever said anything.
It's where the carriages went.
So it'll be fixed, which is, you know, a real accomplishment for us to fix. We could do this every day, all day in the town, but one is done.
Interesting feeling when you find out how many years later the road was built in the wrong place. Things that happen. All right. Questions, concerns? We're happy. We're going to move into our ratification of Meadowbrook Section 5 surety reduction. There's a memo in your binders from the city manager regarding that. Anything you want to gloss over?
Just with, with the exception of a couple punch list items, but the overall construction is complete, and the punch list things really are more to make sure everything is tip-top shape before we accept the infrastructure. But as far as the initial construction, everything's done, so we can return or release the construction surety, and that goes down to basically a maintenance level of 10% of the cost to build things. And that's the $113,500.
Okay. And 30 cents.
And 30 cents, yes.
Got it. Don't skimp on the 30 cents. All right. Any questions from council? Section 5.
Correct.
Okay. Everyone's happy? Everyone looks happy. And clean shaven? All right. We'll move into Low Income Household Water Assistance Program Memorandum of Understanding.
Okay.
That's you.
So, yes. So the state has yet another program to help low-income households. This, again, is Low Income Household Water Assistance Program, which the state calls LEWAP. And we've kind of gone back and forth with, with the state on this one. The Carroll County has already adopted this. So basically, it's just, just another resource for folks if they're having problems paying their, their water and sewer bill. Councilwoman Foster had asked about this a couple of months ago, and there were just a couple of things that were in the original MOU that I was not comfortable with, and kind of worked with the city attorney to come up with some suggested language, and the state was agreeable to it and made the changes to the MOU, and that's what's before you tonight. So really, it's just another, you know, tool in the state's toolbox to help folks who are struggling with, with water and sewer bills. So just makes it another, another way that we can get paid.
Another way to help people get by, and we get paid. How is this marketed? I mean, does the state distribute this? Is it going through the county Department of Human Services? How is it?
It goes through the, through the county, through human services.
Okay. So through the same channel that people would normally contact, it's just another place for them to put them?
Yes.
Okay.
Just another option.
So it's not another item on the checklist that people have to go through themselves? They can still go to that central point, and it'll be pointed out to them?
My understanding, yes.
Okay. Very good.
Mayor, I have a couple of questions, if I might?
Mayor Protam, ask your questions, if you might.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, if I might. So, I mean, do we, in here, talked about the funds being distributed to, you know, a particular, you know, kind of homeowner who's in need, but I was unable to find anywhere in here, and unless I either missed it or I have to find it somewhere else. What are the, the actual thresholds, the requirements, the criteria for qualification? I mean, is there like a, a set limit of income that somebody has to fall beneath in order to, in order to qualify for this?
I'm sure there is, but I think that's outside of the MOU they would be having with us.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
This deals with payment to us.
Right.
Not qualifications to get payment.
It's just us saying that we'll accept payments from them.
Correct.
Okay. So that, and that kind of brings me to my second question, and it sort of goes off of what the mayor was talking about a moment ago. You know, how does, you know, how does somebody find out about it generally? Is it that because that when they're going through the county, that they're alerted to the potential for this program? Is it something that it's automatically that they're enrolled in, or do they actually have to consent to be a part of this?
I think they would be directed, when they contact the, the human services folks for assistance, that they would be advised about this.
Right.
Now, we can certainly put something out on, on, on our Facebook page, you know, to say that we're, we're part of this program now, just to help get the word out, but...
I think that's appropriate. I think that would be...
Right.
A generous thing to do.
And we'll come down to the county department, because they're going to know first if they qualify and give them the appropriate information for that. But I think it's important that we do spread that information ourselves to whatever programs are available through the county or the state to provide any assistance to residents here.
And while there is, you know, a definition of what an eligible household is, of course, that refers you to other sections of the code, so not particularly clear right in the MOU.
Well, thank you very much. Those are my questions. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
My sincere apologies. I need to excuse myself for a family event at 9:15.
All right. You are excused for the remainder of the meeting. Thank you, sir.
I intend no disrespect to citizens who are here or who are viewing later on.
Good night, councilman. Take care.
All right. We shall continue on, then. We have our Catholic Charities Lease Renewal. If you remember, the building over at Roberts Mill Park is on a lease with the Catholic Charities for their Head Start program, and this is a continuation of that. I don't believe there's been any changes made to it. Is that correct?
No, sir.
Okay. So just looking to continue as we've had. Questions, concerns? Okay. Then we will continue moving on. Ratification of Meads Crossing EDU Memorandum. This is regarding the recreation facilities over in Meads Crossing for the residents that live there, and simply stating that we are agreeing to an amount of EDUs, an allocation of EDUs, and then it'll be revisited in what time period? I don't think I saw that in there.
A year after total water bill usage.
Okay. So full year, it'll be reevaluated whether they're using all of those, some of those or more than those. Sound good? So we're allocating three EDUs at the current time, and we'll figure it out in a year. Now, when does that, I guess, once we start billing them, is when that year will start?
Right. After, they'll build the, the thing, they'll use it for a year after they finish building it, and then everybody has the opportunity to evaluate, because we want a full year of real usage, not construction usage.
Right. Okay.
And we did that with Carroll Vista.
Right.
Same process.
Okay. Questions? It was very straightforward tonight. I appreciate that. I blame staff. Lastly, turf mowing contract amendment fuel surcharge. Now thankfully, I saw that the price of gas is going down right now. However, we're looking to amend our contract with Eckers Lawn Service, saying that if it goes above $5 a gallon, there's going to be a fuel surcharge added on to it. And in addition, since we changed some things in parks, there's some additional costs associated, some hourly rates for the story-stroll boards at Memorial Park and the fence at Roberts Mill Park that we put in. So a couple of changes to that. So my understanding is if gas goes over five, and they specified how they're getting it, that's based on Maryland prices, which is good. They'll notify us, and then once it dips down below again, we'll return to regular price.
Correct.
Okay.
And this is similar to what we had included in the solid waste contract.
Right.
But it is set at a dollar higher than, than that one. So hopefully this surcharge will not be added on as much as we're going to end up with, with the solid waste contract.
Okay.
So we, we set a higher threshold this time, because it's, it's after the fact.
Is the surcharge penny for penny over $5 going to be added on, or what is the... Do you know what I mean?
I will, yes. Let me see if...
Right. Amanda, it says there will be one if it's over $5 a gallon. The question is, it's going to be a $10 surcharge because it went over $5 a gallon? Or is it going to be penny for penny what's over $5?
Okay.
Unless I missed it in there. Did anyone else see that in there?
There is, um, we had a conversation with, with the vendor on, on Friday about how that was... There is -- we had a conversation with the vendor on Friday about how that would be calculated, and I'm trying to pull up the...
Okay. I think Judy -- I'm not used to looking at you.
Yeah, I know. No, there's a link, but I can't get it to work.
Oh, well, that's for the website for fuel prices, but not the surcharge. Right? Yeah, that's where they figure out the weekly average gas prices.
I thought it was just calculated $40 if it was over $5.
Well, no, that $40 was for the weekly trimming. That's in a different section of the -- yeah. That's how I read it. If we can get more information by Monday, that would be superb.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right now, it's targeted to be 1.5 fuel -- 1.5 percent, which we equate to $114.30 monthly. It's based on the -- unlike road vehicles, where it would be based on the miles traveled and the miles per gallon of the vehicles, this is based on the hours, the run hours of the lawn equipment and the consumption rate of those pieces of equipment. So they are talking about 1.5 percent fuel surcharge, which equates to $114.30 monthly, or $28.58 for the weekly cuttings.
Okay.
So...
Got it.
Okay. And Lorraineia does have adequate funds in the budget to cover it, so...
Okay. Very good. Just make sure we had an actual figure to look out on here.
Now, out of curiosity, is the 1.5 percent a number that we should put into the contract amendment? Or do we anticipate that that surcharge is going to fluctuate if the price regrettably gets higher?
It could fluctuate, and we've got kind of in the vendor's explanation, he uses the example of if gas were to continue to increase to $7 a gallon, they would increase the fuel surcharge to 3 percent. I don't have a dollar amount to go with that, but...
But at that point, we'd be doing this again because we're just talking about the $5. If it goes up to seven, they won't charge it. They're going to have to come back to us with another agreement.
Well, this is if it's over five. So five is the threshold. Any point after five, they can apply the surcharge.
Apply. Okay.
So should we go ahead and request some kind of stipulation that if the price rises above $7, that we have to take a look at this again?
Let me work with the city attorney between now and Monday on that and see if we need to make any modifications to that.
All right. Thank you very much.
Sometimes just good to know what we're agreeing to, that's all.
Right.
Absolutely.
Okay. Additional questions? Concerns?
I would suggest if it goes above $7, that we just go ahead and get rid of all of our vehicles and use horses and cows. And then they can cut the grass, and it'll save us money.
Real mowers that don't use gas. But Joe knows how to use. All right. Well, that does it for the 10 items of new business, which brings us to our public comment for agenda items. If you would like to talk about something that was on the agenda and that we have discussed this evening, you're welcome to come up to the lectern. Same rules apply. State your name, state your address, and then you'll have three minutes to share with us your thoughts and opinions. It is open.
Hello. I'm Jim Thomas on Deal Road. So my participation in the annexation questions, you know, I've submitted emails and letters to you, has been really trying to look at this question of the pattern of development and this choice of the annexation, not really about whether you annex or not, but just to open up the conversation about this is a paradigm. Because what I've learned is I've, in conversation and looked at jurisdictions across the country through strong towns and through the work of Urban Three in Asheville, North Carolina, for example, that what happens is that towns really cannot afford this kind of development. It's not sustainable. So my hope is, and I haven't heard this tonight, is that there's a conversation from this perspective to see if, doing the numbers and your homework around these long-term life-cycle costs of infrastructure, police, which Mr. Vigliotti and these services, which you can project, is whether the revenue can support this decision. And if you're like a lot of other jurisdictions across the country, it's not a sustainable development paradigm. So I just want to encourage you to look really seriously and have this conversation, which has not happened tonight. It was just starting to happen, to see if you can afford to do this or not. And what happens is that jurisdictions get in trouble because they'll accept the responsibility for the infrastructure, as the developer usually pay those costs upfront in terms of roads, et cetera. And they assume then the responsibility for maintenance down the road. So what happens in the first few years is a lot of cash flow, things look good, but then when this maintenance issues crop up, 20, 25 years down the road, the revenue does not pay for these maintenance costs. So you have to develop more and more and more to be able to afford what you developed in the past. So that is my concern, and I would just encourage you all and support a bigger conversation about this question so that -- because you're making these decisions of other properties just to see as a paradigm whether this is sustainable and in the best interest of the town. Okay? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Additional comment on agenda items?
How's it going? My name is Christopher Miller, 107 A Travianian Road, Tawnytown, Maryland. So I don't really have the, I guess I should say, the issue that I don't think this land should be developed at some point. At some point, it should be developed. The problem is that it seems like it's being rushed to get to that point. As Jim said earlier, if you guys vote no, I mean, there's a highly unlikely chance, like, I mean, it's probably not going to happen. The county's not going to do anything with it, right? They'll probably just sit there like it has. Another thing is, when you think about it, and I don't mean to be rude to anybody, but when it comes down to representation, I think the last election, there was 266 votes casted out of 4,400 registered voters in Tawnytown. That means half of this board represents about 5 percent of voters in Tawnytown. Not to mention, no disrespect to Mr. Hand, but I think he was voted on by the board as well. So when you come down to it, whether you guys have the proper representation to make a big decision like this for the town is questionable. I think it should be kicked back to the public to see what they have to say about it. And if you guys are confident that this is good for the town, the public might take your side. Present the facts that you guys have on the project to them. Have them vote for it, see how it comes out. If it doesn't turn out your guys' way, I mean... The other thing is, I think it was brought up that it takes 1,000 signatures for a petition. I'm not sure if that's correct. That's what I've been told. When you think about that, you guys received, on average, between the six of you, about 320 votes total to get your positions where you are in the council. So they need to get three times that in signatures of residents of Tawnytown to overturn you guys' decision. Again, that's not representation. Far from it. So again, my suggestion would be to kick it back, let the people decide. It's a big decision. It's a lot of houses being added. Again, it will make the parties happy. Nobody can really say they didn't try. And yeah, that's all I got.
All right. Thank you very much.
I'm very much in favor of annexing the Sewell property. In fact, I strongly, strongly suggest that you do it so that you have some control over what's going on there. Maybe you haven't decided or can't agree yet on what you want, but it will give you some control. Now, let me tell you about a little town called Potomac, Maryland. It was about the size of Tawnytown. And my family was thinking a move over there. They cut the farm land over into six-acre lots with one house on it. Today, we would call it McMansions. Now, I want to also make you aware that McMansions are only 10 miles from Tawnytown right now. That's how close they are. Any big developer could come right in and put McMansions up. Now, let me tell you what happened in Potomac with those mansions, the big six-acre lots. As the years went by, they got cut down to one-acre lots, then they got cut down to half-acre lots. After 30 years, I went over there. The downtown was high in clothes, high in jewelry. The town of Potomac no longer exists. Now, is that what you want for Tawnytown? If you approve of this land, at least it pushes it out a little further, your approval. And I strongly, strongly suggest you annex it.
All right. Thank you very much. Who else would like to speak this evening?
I'm Dr. Christine Kiosi, and I live on Deal Road. First thing that I want to say, although Mr. Hand is gone, is that, yes, he received a lot of communication. And some of that communication was very fiery and perhaps was misquoting facts, et cetera. But there is a very large contingency here of people who have educated themselves about these issues, who strongly feel that this is a mistake. That's the first thing. Secondly, I am very concerned, and respectfully, when someone says that we, as a council or as a community, have to be concerned about what the Sewells expect. That is, should not play, in my opinion, a part in this decision. This decision should be solely based upon what is their responsible decision for this community to do for itself. And because when we start thinking about other people's business life, then we make decisions that potentially are not fair to the community. Third, Mr. Vigliotti presented a lot of very important data about safety. I will tell you, from the perspective of a retired physician, that when you add a single minute to a trip in an ambulance, you can lose a patient. Thirty seconds. So if there is not going to be the structure in place and the right emergency services in place, I don't think we have any business annexing a land, which will have an R-10,000 zoning, which we know will be developed. It is irresponsible. I think the most important thing, and I know this is not a popular opinion among a lot of people here, and I hate to make enemies, but I'm going to say it. The most important thing is, what is the most responsible thing to do for this community? You have a world-class restaurant on one end of town, and you have a park that is absolutely gorgeous on the other. And you have a lot of blight in between, and there's a lot of stuff that this council could be turning their attention to, other than annexing something way out there that will provide a wonderful sale for somebody who's well-loved in this community, but will also add a lot of potential problem before we have solutions in place. So thanks for listening.
Thank you. All right. And I'll take one more comment this evening.
My name's Tara Stanzick. I live at 29 Amicus Street. Want to point out, I didn't hear anything about the environment, so it looks like our town council doesn't care about that. I can't believe we only have eight police officers right now, if that's what I heard correctly. Understandably, that, I guess, it's been an issue, and that's something to scoff at. So that doesn't really look too good on some of our council members. And, you know, if that really is truly a problem, that we've had an issue with the police officers and with whoever it is that have not been able to get hired or have those people come in, then having additional people moving into 300-plus houses, which I understand, Mary, you said is probably not going to happen, it's not going to solve the issue. Obviously, there's something that needs to happen within the department itself, or there needs to be different recruitment efforts. Okay? If you're going to develop, then I propose developing it as mixed use and getting that taken care of. If there's anything that I can assist with, with anything at all, with pushing, with getting people, I will do that. You know, if you're going to have it with the 300-plus houses, it's going to cost more money down the road, just as my colleague Jim Thomas was stating. I mean, that's just plain research that we did on smart growth. It's going to cost more money with the fact that you're going to have pipes having to go so far out. And then those pipes, I'm talking about water pipes, sewer pipes, whatever, is going to have to be maintained. Okay? Elected council members, you're elected by the people, right? You're fully, like, are you fully taking into consideration the comments of the residents of Tawnytown? Are you seriously doing that? You are elected by the people. You know, some of us are misinformed, and I want to know, although this council member, Hand, is not available, did you reply back to the person with the correct information? If we are spouting out misinformation, are you going to be getting down our information and replying back to us? I know that's hard. I know that there's not a lot of people. We don't have a lot of resources. But then it's your due diligence as council members, city workers, whatever it may be, to make sure that the actual information is spread correctly. Sorry. This is not just about one family. It's about the town people as well. We, as a community, you know, we're given the right, through the Maryland Municipal Code, to actually publicly comment and provide our opinions and research, you know? And as they say, don't put all your eggs in one basket. So it's not the council's fault. It's not the residents' fault. Okay? Instead of feeling offended by the community who elected you, you know, you should take it into consideration and figure out a way to help residents not feel blindsided when they come to these meetings and they say, "I never heard of this before. Why am I hearing it now? I'm sure, I'm not really sure why I'm getting a smirk from some of the council members at this moment in time." But I just want to remind you that I'm a registered voter. And if this is how it's going to be, then I hope you're not on the board next time. So, thanks.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Appreciate everyone's time this evening, coming up and sharing with us your thoughts. Much appreciated. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Showroom.
And a second, please.
Second.
All in favor of adjournment? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. All right. Thank you all. Enjoy the night. Hopefully, I'll see you Monday night.